I am going to call to order the February 26, 2024 School Comedian Meeting. I'm going to read the statement. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harvard Media recording this evening, and we will be recording on Zoom for minutes purposes. Is anybody in the audience planning to record? Okay, so just so you know, we have a scheduled start time at 6:00. However, we are going to adjourn to executive session. We will be returning to open meeting at 6:30. So if you are here, join us back at 6:30. In the meantime, I will take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, for the purposes of to hear grievance from HEA Unit A. As an open meeting, it may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare. Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm on A's wall. Okay, we are... We will be back at 6:30. Thank you. We are going to return to open session. Sorry for the delay. We were in executive session before now. I'm going to reread the statement that I read earlier. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harvard Media recording this evening, and we are recording for purposes of the minutes on Zoom. Is there anybody else in the audience or online recording? No? Okay. All right, so we're going to take the agenda out of order, if you don't mind. We are going to go to Item 9.1, the school showcase for Hingham High School, so that Rick Swanson can come up and present his showcase and get out of here at a reasonable time.
All right, great. Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for putting us right at the front of the line. Good news tonight is our Hingham High School showcase will be delivered by six Hingham High School students. My responsibility here tonight is primarily to introduce them, and just say a couple of words at the beginning, and then maybe later at the end. We decided this year to highlight three programs in particular that are worthy of being showcased as part of our annual school showcase. One of them, at least, will be very familiar to all of you, our Global Citizenship Program, which is the first of what's now three major pathways programs available to Hingham High School students. And you remember that around this time last year, we were talking about piloting two new pathways, one in the arts and one in technology engineering, and now those programs exist. Our Global Citizenship Program is into its second decade at this point. It was founded over 10 years ago, and I'd like to think a decade from now, we'll be saying the same thing about these two new pathways that you'll hear about tonight. GCP has become a model program for other schools, and I also hope this will be the case for these other pathways as well. And so to tell you about these programs, nobody better than students who are participants in those programs. We're going to start with the Global Citizenship Program and two of its officers, Ellie McKay and Aradhna Sood, both of whom are seniors at Hingham High School. So the slides you'll see tonight and the remarks you'll hear about these three programs are all directly from our students. So I'll turn it over right now to Ellie and Aradhna, and then we'll hear later from two other students with the Fine Arts Program pathway, and then they will conclude with two students who have been participants in piloting our technology engineering pathway. Before I turn it over, one thing I did want to emphasize really was how much debt we owe to the Hingham Arts Alliance for helping to provide the funding this year for the advisors that have helped us to launch those two new pilot programs. That's been a huge assist to us, just as the HEF was a decade ago in launching our GCP. So now to tell the story of GCP, Ellie and Aradhna.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Aradhna Sood, and I'm the president of GCP. This is Ellie McKay. She's our treasurer this year, and I wanted to speak with you a little bit about GCP and kind of our mission. I do. Sorry. Thank you. All right, just one more, please. Thank you. Okay, so our organization is aimed at teaching students about new cultures and helping them to appreciate new traditions and things that they may learn about other countries. Global, we also talk about things that are going on globally, global conflicts, and kind of we try to stay up to date with it and sort of help students through that learning process. As much as we are a club and try to encourage everyone to join, it is a rigorous program. We do require students to take two global electives and four years of a language of their choice, and towards the end of the program, students have to complete a portfolio project, which Ellie and I are working on right now. It's due by the end of the week. And the portfolio project is based on a topic of the student's choice. They come up with a research question. They can write a research paragraph, cook a meal, create a presentation, do an art project, really anything to help them gain a deeper understanding for the culture that they are researching. So just talking about community and opportunity, these are a couple photos that I took from my travel experience in Prague, Salzburg, and Vienna two years ago. I was lucky enough to go on this trip that was sponsored by GCP and the school. We went with the core students as well, and it was a really wonderful experience. I hadn't been to either country. And you can see that's our group. Sorry. And it was just amazing to... I made a bunch of new friends that trip that I still have today. And it's just really wonderful to have that opportunity, because a lot of people may not be able to travel outside the country with their family, but having it sponsored through the school is a really amazing thing. I'll hand it over to Ellie.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ellie McKay. To ensure that we are inspiring greater passions, the members of the board hold monthly events for students that are part of the club to attend, and there's a wide variety of events to attend to make sure that they kind of stay diverse and interesting to all, like different students in the program and students with different backgrounds. I'm the treasurer of the club, and some things that I presented about include Kwanzaa, how Valentine's Day is celebrated around the world, and Chinese New Year. We try to keep, obviously, the meetings very relevant to the month to kind of ensure some engagement within the program and kind of, I don't know, come up with things that students want to learn about and students can connect with based on their own backgrounds or maybe not part of their background and something that they would like to learn more about. We also have mass meetings and advisory meetings per month that students are required to attend, which is kind of what Aradhna was saying when it's more of a rigorous program. At mass meetings, we've had the pleasure of having speakers come in and talk about their own backgrounds, and we've had many people Zoom in from places around the world, including, we had Singapore this year, who was Mrs. Garland's daughter, and it was so fascinating to kind of learn about her experience and like how she's able to kind of work all around the country, I mean, all around the world. And then at advisory meetings, we had the opportunity to break into smaller groups and talk about kind of what Aradhna was saying, important global matters in the world right now. And that's definitely to keep students more educated on things that are happening around the world that you might not know about. We talked a lot about Ukraine earlier in this year to make sure that students that are part of the program stay up to date and informed on things that are happening all around the world and not just in the U.S., and these are led by a teacher to kind of ensure that. Thank you. And then finally, we have the symposium each year in May. Aradhna just touched on what the portfolio project was, and so seniors are required to complete their portfolio project in order to complete the program of GCP. So each senior is required to complete this, so you learn about a topic and make a project about it. You could write a paper, or it can be more of a hands-on opportunity. For my portfolio, I completed it earlier this year, and I learned about Indian foods that are eaten during Diwali, and so I learned how to make samosas, which was definitely an interesting process, but it was kind of rewarding to learn how to do, and I did it with the help of my parents too, which was fun. So it was kind of fun for everyone to learn about something new and different. And then, yeah, I just basically took pictures of my process. And then also in the portfolio, you present about your travel experience or travel equivalent. I've never been out of the country, so I had the opportunity of hosting a foreign exchange student this year named Alessia from Switzerland, and I hosted her from August to November. So I wrote my, the portion of the portfolio about her and kind of the experience of learning new things about culture in Switzerland. And then, so for the symposium aspect of it, students gather all of the information from their portfolio, and they can either make like a tri-board or other ways to kind of like present all the information that you learned, and then all the other students in the program are required to go around and just kind of learn about all the portfolios. There's also like food at this event too, so it's super fun and engaging. I've loved going to it in the past, and I'm excited to present this year at it. But yeah, that's basically to sum up GCP, and I don't know, it's been a really rewarding process. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And I'll introduce, and the only thing I will add is that you're all invited to that GCP symposium at the end of the year. It's always a good time. And maybe questions for the group altogether at the end? We could turn it over right now to Nina Murphy and me and Nagel, both of whom are involved in our fledgling arts pathway.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nina Murphy, and I'm the secretary and treasurer of Arts Pathway. So Arts Pathway is a pilot program that was developed collaboratively between students and teachers last year, at the end of last year. I was unfortunately not part of that process, but I know that it was in an effort to bring together visual arts, music, and theater all into one greater community. So kind of an overview of the Arts Pathway. Like I said, it's a combination of visual arts, theater, and music, and it is also a combination of Arts Pathway Club or the Higher Achieving Arts Pathway Certificate Program, which at the end of either your junior or your senior year, you complete your certificate or a portfolio, kind of like GCP. And then it's aimed at more community arts engagement. Students are required to attend both professional and school-student related events, and like I mentioned, there is a capstone project at the end of either your junior or your senior year. So kind of speaking to community and opportunity, one of the requirements of Arts Pathway, the club and the certificate program, is attending for community arts events per semester, and one of which has to be professional. It can be anything from musical or theatrical performances to art museums. And the benefit of this requirement is there's greater student support at, for example, orchestra concerts, band concerts, theater productions, and art exhibitions, and it exposes students to a higher level professional events in their discipline that they might not have otherwise attended or experienced, which can be both inspiring and informative. And it also strengthens the sense of community between art students when they come and support each other's work. Oh, actually, sorry. Same slide. And then a little bit more about opportunity is that, actually, this Thursday, the Arts Pathway program is going on a field trip to Boston to see BSO open rehearsal and to take a guided tour of the Isabella Stewart Gardner Museum. And this is a super cool opportunity because it gives students the opportunity for further inspiration in their discipline or even like learn something new about a different one, so visual arts students going to an open BSO music rehearsal. And then individually, arts usually take one field trip per year, but through Arts Pathway, students get to get high-quality experiences in an area that they don't necessarily study, which in turn strengthens the appreciation and understanding of each discipline and between each student in the pathway.
For, oh, sorry. Inspiring Greater Passion, we are also offering workshops where each student is able to sort of like share with their peers, like one of their passions. So next Monday, I'll be running a printmaking workshop where I'm going to be teaching my fellow students what printmaking is and how to do it, because it's something I'm very passionate about. And then my co-president is also holding one where middle schoolers are going to be able to interact with crew heads from drama and just kind of get to know the drama program at the high school, and sort of try to get more middle schoolers excited about it, one Santa High School. And then we're also offering free music lessons as another workshop where younger students are able to take lessons from high schoolers, so high schoolers are able to get the experience of teaching, I guess, younger kids about it. We also had an art action panel where graduates from Hingham High School came back who had attended college for either music, drama, or visual arts, and it was a great opportunity for high schoolers to interact with students who had like once been in their position at Hingham High and sort of get inspired by what they could do in the future and sort of like seeing the opportunities that they can take in college. Let's see. For Inspiring Greater Achievement, Nina kind of touched on it a little bit with the capstone project. The capstone project is like the big final thing where you're able to sort of demonstrate everything you've learned throughout the couple years being in the club. So each discipline can sort of take their own route. So for example, I'm doing visual arts, I'm going to be having a solo show, and it's sort of preparing me for college and like showing off my artwork in a more professional setting, which I think is also a great experience for high schoolers. So I'll be able to curate my own sort of show, and drama students and music students are able to perform also a solo show, or you're able to do some research and write an essay. But having this is just, it's like, sorry, students are given the ability to sort of prepare for college. Sorry. Is there anything else? Sorry. I think that's it, but so far, it's definitely been a great opportunity to interact with other art students, and especially as a visual arts student, interacting with music and drama and sort of finding ways to connect some of their techniques for artistic expression and being able to add it into my own artwork is definitely inspiring, and I think going forward, this will be a really great opportunity for art students and especially for preparing art students for college, something that, it's definitely a different route than the more traditional application. So I think having this as a resource is definitely going to help future students. I think that's it. Anything else?
Thank you both so much. And finally, to learn about our new technology engineering pathway, Sam Ackerman and Violet Palmer.
Hi, my name is Vi Palmer. I am, I think I am the president of the pathways program.
I am Sam Ackerman, the vice president.
So one of our main, so since these programs are both, or the pathways and the arts program are very relatively new to the school, we have made it one of our goals to try and connect with the students who are already in the technological classes such as woodshops and traces and to reach out across the school through flyers and talking to those classes about the program.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, and kind of promoting the pathway in those courses that we offer, like the automotive engineering and the, like the construction tech classes with Dr. P. Those are, yeah, get people's interest, and people like to, you know, move on from there.
An overview of tech engineering pathways is that we often, our goal is to go on to on one field trip every term. This term, we have not gone on our field trip yet, but we try to meet once a month and before those field trips to discuss what goes on, figure out a plan of what the field trip is going to entail, and get the forms out to the students who are interested in said field trips. Field trips we've gone on to so far include MASA, a company that is located in Hingham near the shipyard, and the Massachusetts Manufacturing Meetup, which was in Worcester, Mass. Both of these field trips, MASA has offered the school, or students who went on that field trip, an internship, while the meetup gave experience to all the kids on what it's like to interact with modern-day tech companies, and we got to talk to people who read, ran said companies from across Massachusetts.
Right, yeah, both of those field trips that we went on were great, great experiences. And for everybody there to get to, at the MASA, they had us doing a lot of interactive activities to kind of put us in, in the world of manufacturing and showing us a lot of the new tech and stuff that they had going on there, which was really cool to see, as well as meeting different companies and colleges that were there promoting kind of their programs and what they had to offer. So very informational. And then as well as the MASA was very cool, that right down the street, and I always wanted to know what's in there. It's all right. Right, really cool, really cool. You guys wouldn't believe, yeah.
Community is an opportunity. Like I mentioned before, the HHS Traces Program, this is a photo, actually, Mr. Swanson posted on his Twitter, of all the Traces kids and what they had built. This is the high school's robotics team that I am the proud manager of. We go and compete every year, actually, next weekend at a competition at BSU. We compete and we put our engineering knowledge to the test. Majority of the Traces kids are in this program as well, so they get to get a further education through the Traces program as well as through this field trip program to view the world and actually get their hands dirty in the world of engineering.
Right, exactly. Providing great experiences, yeah. This was us at the manufacturing mashup. We had, forget this first one was to try to fit a certain product into a certain size, and then members of the group there, they won the different merit, and so it was, yeah, learned a lot there.
Yeah, this was one of the field trips, like Sam said, and it helped us all learn the engineering design process and get a firsthand in designing our own products and experiencing.
Right, and inspiring a greater passion in manufacturing.
Inspiring Greater Achievement, these are all photos of creations from the tech ed classes. This is a welding sculpture that I had my hand in helping to create in our tech, Power Tech class. This is another photo of the robotics team in mid-competition, and this is one of the woodshop projects that came out of, I'm pretty sure either this year or last year. These are some of the wonderful things we can create by using our imagination and through the program and through just the technological side of the high school, are able to create and spread creativity and our engineering knowledge to the high school.
Right, yeah. And similar to the Arts Pathway with both technologically engineering in a club and then as well as a certificate, if you're really into it and you stay committed and you go to every meeting and join all the field trips, oh yeah, you get a certificate at the end of your senior year when establishing that you've been a strong part of this program. So that's meaningful, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank those six students for doing a terrific job and putting that presentation together. And in closing, I would just add that last slide, which called some attention to the award you've heard of by now that Hingham High School recently won from AFS, which was a really big deal, very exciting for us to win a national award as a school that best represented, according to AFS, this year, their mission of building a more just and peaceful world through intercultural exchange and global education. And they singled out GCP in particular to say, this is really something that's a hallmark of our school and something that distinguishes our school, is really doing an excellent job in that regard. I think that points to what GCP has accomplished over the last decade and also gives us a great sense of what these two new pathways may accomplish in the years to come as well. With this kind of student leadership, we have very high hopes for it. Also want to recognize the faculty and staff leadership we've had, two of them who are right here, our arch director, Joanne Bellis, and the handiest man you'll ever meet, Rory Malurbi, who teaches more courses than anyone at the high school, literally true. The previous statement is also literally true, the handiest person you're likely to ever meet. They have both brought tremendous energy and passion to this work, but also want to emphasize that these programs, all three of them really have been co-created by students working together with faculty, so it really reflects the vision of students. And it's been really important to us in building these programs to ask, what do our students want them to be, and what kind of experiences do they long for, and trying to create those experiences through these pathways has been very rewarding work for all of us at the high school. So I'll stop there. I'm not sure if you had any questions for the students, or given the length of your agenda, if it's time to move on to everything else.
This is more interesting.
Leave that to you. Not disagree.
Sorry. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, Barbara.
I was curious out of all of you, because I haven't had the chance. I was an arts person in high school, but I wish I had the same opportunity, but are any of you planning to pursue a pathway that's different than your original plan because you've been involved in this? Maybe you thought you would do something completely different when you left for college, but now that you've had these experiences, has it caused you to change your path at all?
So I am a violinist in the orchestra, and I do chamber outside of school, and I didn't think I would keep doing music, like, I also play the fiddle, so I knew I would continue that after college, but I didn't think, you know, playing in an orchestra or anything, becoming a music major in college, that was anything. And I'm still not planning on becoming a music major, but I think I'm going to try to find a way to continue to play in an orchestra, you know, keep playing, keep the violin like in my life because of this program.
So if you're for hire, I'm going to hire you.
I love it.
Excellent. Well, I'm curious about what the, what the, they talk about the monthly meetings that they go to and the field trips. Is the coursework any different for them on a day-to-day basis?
I feel like kind of an element that we kind of forgot to touch on a little bit was the classes that you also have to take for GCP. You're required to take some global electives as well, so there was a couple like little changes to my schedule that you kind of, I feel like everyone kind of has that moment where they realize that they need to fit GCP into their schedule, so I ended up taking Botany last year, which was really interesting, and then AP Environmental Science fit in and AP Lit fit in, which I think Mrs. Ralph is on this right now. Yeah, so I definitely had to move around my schedule a little bit to make it fit, which I think made it a little bit more rewarding to also be able to finish this program and also take classes that I probably wouldn't have taken if it wasn't for GCP. I loved taking Botany, and I didn't really think that that was going to be something that I was going to have interest in. But yeah, you definitely do have to switch your day-to-day life around a little bit to make it work, but it's definitely a rewarding experience.
Not necessarily the case for the technology pathways. It's just a monthly meeting before school one day, and in that meeting, we'll kind of overview both the, our upcoming field trip as well as like other kind of information that the people might want to, the people in the club might want to be exposed to. But it's not a serious commitment outside of that, but it is, it does tie in very well to all of like the classes that Mr. Mau and Dr. P teach, and so it coincides with that really well, yeah.
Thanks. Okay, all right. I appreciate you coming. I'm sure your first day back, you have a ton of homework to do, or maybe not. Hopefully not. My daughter was dreading going this morning, and she got in the car. Oh, it wasn't so bad. So hopefully you're feeling the same way. She already has the countdown for the next vacation, so 45 days, if anybody's curious. All right, well, thank you. Um, all right, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, back to the, back to the other stuff, sorry. All right, so I'm gonna go backwards to uh, four point one, approval of minutes. We've got um, a set of meeting minutes to approve for February fifth, if somebody wants to make a motion.
I will move to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held February fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Any discussion? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, those are approved. Okay, item five, questions and comments. Um, this is the part where we, we allow for up to fifteen minutes um, for any questions or comments, for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Um, we usually give some time for any, any new items for um, the public to come up and comment or question on those items, but if there's not anything on tonight's agenda and you would like to speak, if you could raise your hand just so I um, I know whether we have anybody and if so, I will read my statement. Doesn't look like it, okay, all right, so um, we will move over to item six, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Adams?
Sure, uh, in the um, packet we provided um, super, in the superintendent's report, um, copies of the school attending children's, students' report and I gave you both the copy of two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-three. Um, this is an annual requirement of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to provide information on the students, the schools the students attend that are in the district as of January first. Um, as part of the town census, we inserted um, um, I think it was yellow, a yellow sheet that asked anyone in the community with their town census to return back information on the names of the children that were in the household and the schools that were attending. That allowed us to get even more accurate information. If you compare the two reports, you'll see the addition, um, especially some out-of-state boarding schools that we did not have on previous lists, so we got additional information. So you'll see, um, and I believe it helped us be more accurate. Um, the traditional way we've gotten the information is by contacting the offices of schools students have traditionally attended and asking them to let us know who are Hingham residents who are, might be attending that school, but this added a whole um, additional um, number of students to the um, reporting. The purpose of that town census really was to get us, help us get a more accurate census of children under five. We were trying to make a better prediction of the children coming up as well as be able to outreach um, both for pre-K, preschool um, and kindergarten as well, but it also served another purpose. In comparing the two reports, um, you'll see that we had three students, um, we have three students being homeschooled this year compared to eight last year. Um, we have eight hundred and fifteen students attending private schools in, um, in-state this year compared to eight hundred and sixty-nine last year. Um, we have a number of students attending out-of-district um, public um, schools, nine um, last year compared to twenty-five this year. Um, you'll also see numbers for charter schools, um, number attending collaboratives as well as out-of-district private schools um, as well. You'll see overall, um, our population has um, decreased of student, school age population from four thousand five hundred eighty-nine um, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three to four thousand five hundred nineteen um, this year. So that's just for your information, I think it's interesting information to sort of look at um, and continue to look for trends um, over the years. Um, we announced the two finalists um, for the South Elementary School Principal. Um, we're grateful to all the members of the community, South Community who participated and the school administration who have participated in the screening committee. Um, this week on, on Wednesday and Thursday, um, both members, um, one will be there on Wednesday and another on Thursday um, to meet um, the staff, um, engage with the families. There'll also be some opportunities in the evening via Zoom um, for members of the community to also um, give, um, meet the candidates and also give feedback. We continue to have, we have the Executive Director of Student Services position posted. We continue to recruit for that position. Um, and we've added um, posting on various other boards as well as on social media to sort of gather um, further our outreach. And on, we're glad on the early release, um, in February, we continued our relationship with the Mass Department of Elementary Secondary Education Safe Schools Program. They provided um, sup-, um, training to our food service, custodians and administrative assistants on ways that they can also provide for support um, for our LGBTQT plus um, students and families. So that was just a brief little update. As well as um, in the superintendent's report, um, it was postponed from the last meeting. I'll just briefly go through um, some artifacts at the formative, at the midpoint of the year. Um, this is just an opportunity to provide some um, evidence to the committee as a whole on um, the progress towards the four goals, um, as well as um, you know, sort of show you how we're working towards that um, as a district. Um, goal one was continuing to provide for the effective entry and direction setting. Um, and the action steps for this goal was to continue to work on year two of the strategic plan and tonight we'll present a, an up, a second update to the strategic plan um, and later on in the year we'll present a third. Um, continue working on the professional development plan, year one, at the end of the year, we'll give you an update on the professional development plan and the progress made this year. We're in year one of the technology plan, we'll plan at the end of the year to also provide an update on that. Um, we're working on year one goals of our equity audit, um, equity plan and at the end of the year, we'll also provide an update on that, it'll be busy time at the end of the year with updates on lots of plans. Um, the goal is to show that these are not plans that are just sitting on a shelf, but that we're working towards the action steps that are outline them and, and the goal is to be in this continual cycle of improvement and working towards improving um, tech, the achievement and the services and supports we provide our students and families as well as strengthening um, the outcomes for our students. Um, continuing to implement and strengthen MTSS, tonight you'll get a second update on winter assessment data um, for literacy and math. Um, and continuing to create opportunities to amplify um, student voices. Um, some of the artifacts that I included as attachments that you can click on are that update to the presentation and overview of the strategic plan update, the first one, tonight we'll give you number two. Um, the communication plan um, that we presented earlier this year that will also give you an update at the end of the year on. Um, that MTSS update of the fall benchmarks, tonight you're getting the winter benchmark update. Um, we've also been working um, and um, Ness is on that committee with us as um, the wellness committee and using that committee to help sort of continue conversations about social emotional learning um, in the, in, for all of our students. Um, the second goal was around strengthening procedures for hiring, recruiting and retention. Um, part of, part of that was continuing to strengthen our procedures and our policies, um, working on a hiring guide for hiring managers, developing um, materials to distribute to prospective applicants, um, revising our process for hiring substitutes and establishing quarterly substitute training, creating a system for paraprofessional training. Um, we've done some research on that um, so far and have some plans to hopefully put something down on paper for the spring to begin to implement next year to, so that we have an ongoing orientation of paraprofessionals, not only just at the beginning, but also throughout the year. Um, providing training for hiring managers in the role of bias, um, and tracking um, data on recruitment and retention. Some of the artifacts I linked for you are the table of contents, they're lengthy documents, they're still in draft form, we're getting feedback on them. Um, and later in the spring, I'll share pieces of those is um, a faculty handbook that we're on, it's in draft form, um, the table of contents for a hiring guide. We earlier in this year revised the substitute handbook and have created training materials for substitutes. Um, we've done three trainings this year of substitutes that are new and we've onboarded with um, in collaboration with the Human Resource Coordinator. Um, and there's a table of contents of a paraprofessional handbook that we've started and are working on. Um, the third goal is around the program evaluation of student services. Um, next month, we hope to share the program about, final program evaluation with you as well as some goals, short-term, um, and then by the end of the year, share some long-term goals um, for student services. Um, and um, as well as Dr. Cataldo, this evening will provide a student services update number two for you, um, and we'll do that as well as um, at the end of the year. Um, you'll see linked as artifacts, um, the program evaluation interview schedule. Um, we're also finishing work on the D cap, um, the district curriculum accommodation plan that hasn't been revised in a bit. Um, we are collecting feedback on that throughout the spring and we'll have a final document at the end of the year. Um, we've um, engaged, um, we've talked about this a couple of times, uh, Behavioral Health Social Emotional Task Force, it's, I attached a timeline of the work um, that we're hoping to complete. Um, we just got started and will present an update at the end of the year um, about how, how much progress we've made. Um, again, Barb, Dr. Cataldo will share a student services update and we've also um, did a lot of work around trying to expand preschool and pre-K opportunities, um, and we'll continue that work um, into next year. And goal four um, was around professional practice and this is the continued work with the superintendent induction program. Um, I included our artifacts that just saw the schedule of dates, um, as well as um, coaching meeting dates that I've had um, with coaches um, to support um, my superintendency. Glad to take any questions?
Okay, thank you. And I think that's it.
That's it, yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, let me get back to the agenda, all right, so item seven, communications, anything received by the superintendent? No, um, student communications, we do not have the students today. Um, other communications, anyone on the committee have any other communications? No. Okay, all right, we'll move over to item number eight, unfinished business, eight point one, to discuss the proposed FY twenty-five budget, um, and I assume, say again? No updates, okay, all right, this is gonna actually be a faster meeting than I thought.
I just asked the, the materials that you last presented, uh, if it was on the website?
I can make sure of that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay?
Okay. Yeah.
Timing for us in terms of voting and I've lost track a little bit.
Yep, so we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting as well, um, but I, I have it on the agenda to vote on the March twelfth meeting. Yeah, and that'll be the same meet, same week that ACES is voting as well. Um, they vote after us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, okay. Okay, um, so moving on to the new business, we heard nine point one. Um, nine point two to hear a presentation of Warren Article N, municipal property leases for solar projects. Um, so we've got HMLP is offering an article for town meeting, um, which would allow this select board or school committee or whoever has care, custody and control of a town building to sign a lease with another party to develop a solar array or battery project at the property, property if they see fit. We've got Laura Burns here today, who's um, from the Light Plants Working Group um, to present uh, the proposal. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much for your time, I'm here to ask for support for Article N at Town Meeting, Laura Burns, four seventy-nine Main Street, I'm Chair of the Light Board. And I also want to recognize that online we have with us Brianna Bennett, who is the Light Plants Communications and Coordination, uh, Communication and Sustainability Coordinator. Can you mean Communications and Coordination, sorry, she's the Sustainability Coordinator.
Sounds good.
And I just want to give you a very brief background on this uh, project and so you'll know what, what the context is for this article. Um, so there's just, you'll, you'll hear more about the Distributed Energy Resources Task Force in a moment, but um, we can go to the next, uh, we'll just look at what the goals of that group are, the research we've done, what the results of the research are and how this uh, town meeting article is part of that, so. Um, the goal is to contribute to Hingham's carbon reduction plans and you'll see here the list of the commitments that we've made as a town. Uh, twenty nineteen, the Light Board included in Light Plant's mission statement, a commitment to a hundred percent carbon-free energy. In twenty twenty-one, Town Meeting voted to seek measures to achieve zero sum of carbon emissions by twenty forty. Um, in twenty twenty-two, the Light Plant Adopt, Board adopted a power supply policy which includes a commitment to build distributed energy and storage resources in Hingham, ideally so, solar arrays with associated batteries. And finally, in twenty twenty-three, Hingham's Climate Action Plan includes the goal, increase carbon-free energy and electrification for Hingham with Decentralized Distributed Energy Resources, DER, and carbon-free power procurement. So you might not have heard the buzzword Distributed Energy Resources and that refers just to uh, any uh, source of energy that we can put onto our power grid that isn't generated by some huge generating plant uh, hundreds of miles away. So basically, in reality, in, for Hingham, that means either or solar arrays or stored energy as batteries, that's what we're talking about. But the reason we choose the, the larger title Distributed Energy Resources is just to cover, um, everybody understands solar arrays, but going forward, finding ways to uh, attach batteries to those solar installations are gonna greatly improve the output and the, how much it can save the light plant and save ratepayers and also reach our carbon reduction goals more in the future. So I, I just said this, to meet uh, Hingham's carbon reduction goals, we need all of the above, not only do we need to green our power supply coming into town, but to the extent that we can build our own, um, our own uh, facilities here in town, we will have more resiliency in the grid and it will also contribute to our carbon reduction goals. And I mentioned pairing solar arrays with battery. And down the road, pairing solar arrays with batteries has the potential to supply emergency power to crucial town services during outages, outages which might include uh, possibly schools that might serve as um, as emergency shelters um, in a, in a power outage or something like that, so that's something to consider for the future. So what's the research we did? Um, in summer twenty twenty-one, I did an informal study with a volunteer on these issues and then in the fall of twenty twenty-two, the general manager formed this working group. It was called the Municipal Solar Working Group and I love our new name, except that nobody knows what it means, so if you can come up with a better one, I'm all ears, I would like to hear some better ideas, but this group uh, consists of staff, uh, me representing the board and some volunteers, which is actually a new thing over at the Light Plant. They haven't ever had committees that involve community volunteers before, so um, they're getting the benefit of some of the, the free enthusiasm and energy that we have in our, in our uh, community. And uh, last winter, we did exploratory discussions, first with other MLP towns that have solar arrays on municipal buildings and also with solar developers and financing groups trying to figure out what is the best, essentially what's the best financial model going forward. So um, those were the things that we studied and the other study we did was uh, which of our town roofs make good sites? So uh, Brianna uh, almost single-handedly developed a wonderful tool where we put in all of our roofs in town and were able to see what the solar capacity is, what the output would be, what the payback time would be, what it would cost, what the bonding would cost, what the payback time would be and in order, in order to help us pick the best possible uh, options. And uh, so you're just seeing here, uh, one of the, a piece of one of the pages, which is the examination of the Hingham High School and its uh, possible potential for solar arrays. So, no surprise, what's, what's the issue? Um, when we look at what the financing would be, the benefits must go to the owner and there's really three possibilities, there's third-party ownership where you're, you know, we just uh, put out an RFP and a developer comes in and they will own the project and they will make a financial arrangement with the Light Plant. Uh, and the town would get a lease for the roof and the Light Plant would buy all of the electricity and we work it out so everybody's happy, one way or another. Uh, the second would be town ownership and that would be um, by far the most valuable um, ownership model because for, if the town um, owns a light array, a light solar array that they put on their own roof, then they will be able to use all the energy that they can use off of the solar array, the rest of it will be sold to the Light Plant and um, and it, there's more benefits to the ratepayers and the taxpayers through that model. The other model is Light Plant ownership and in that model, um, the Light Plant would own an array that goes on a town building, but the Light Plant would take, use all of that energy um, and just put it into the, into the, into the grid. And that is not as, that is not as uh, valuable, I think, to the town or the ratepayers or the taxpayers as the town-owned uh, model. Um, so uh, and I've just, I just ran through them all for you, so quickly, here, here it goes, I've just described this, I'll go ahead, I descri-, I did this already, you can go to the next one. Town ownership, um, and uh, you know, the, a big advantage here is that uh, we can all, we can say with, not perfect certainty, but with, with, um, we can make a really good guess when these facilities will be paid off, when the electricity coming off it will be free, some of the buildings in town. Some of the buildings in town have very long payback periods of time due to what they are and what the conditions are. Some of them are as short, maybe as short as five or seven years for a solar array that has a lifespan of 25 years or so. So that was highly advantageous. But the downside is the town would have to finance it. Now, when we had some discussions with the town last summer, and I should mention that we had some very preliminary discussions some time ago with Dr. Adams and with Ms. Aopong, very long time ago, very brief, just say, hey, we're thinking about this just to see if there was a problem. But last summer, when we were talking to the town, we all agreed with the town that probably town ownership was the best way to go, but the only way to really do that is for the town to go to town meeting for a bond, to bond the project. And understandably, the town administrator's office was not really willing to put any more bonding proposals before town meeting this year. They thought the taxpayers deserved a break from bonding proposals. I have to say that was personally disappointing to me because when we do take these proposals to town meeting, if we do, we'll be able to show that it will pay for itself and be a revenue source. And how many capital projects like that go to a town meeting ever? So I'm enthusiastic about doing that in the future, but this is, this is not the year for it. So we moved on to discussing with the town. They said they would be interested in considering third-party ownership and the big advantage here, of course, is there is no upfront cost to the town and we can build into the RFP all the protections that the town would need. So I think the idea is that this, if we could get started with this, this would be a good way to get going. Let's get some experience. This doesn't mean we have to do all of them this way. In a future year, the light plant may have some cash to buy one or the town may feel like that, sure, let's bring these capital projects that are so promising to town meeting. We'll see how it is. It's not a permanent commitment. So that's why we, we chose going ahead this time with third-party ownership for this year and that brings us to the current, the current proposal. So the article for town meeting is before you because third parties will need licenses or leases to put arrays on municipal roofs and a license, the select board can do on their own, but a license is, is not for a period of time, it's for today. Like you give somebody a license and it can be revoked tomorrow legally. So you can see why solar developers would be reluctant to, to enter into a license, although we've heard there are some, but much more appealing in terms of getting bidders would be a lease. And currently, anytime the town is going to lease a building to an outside party, the town needs town meeting approval to do that. And so our vision for how we would conduct this first round of projects is that we would put out an RFP with, with a group of projects, say five or six buildings, that a developer could look at all the buildings and pick or choose among them for a, for a project that works for them, something that they feel they could deliver that would be good for everybody. And all, this is a model we learned about from some other towns during our research and it increases the number of people who are willing to bid. The other thing we learned from other towns is that you really need to have about, be able to put up about one megawatt, not necessarily all in the same place, but to make it viable for a third party, they really need it to be a project of a certain magnitude. So sometimes the best way to reach that might not to be look for a one megawatt building, but look for a bunch of buildings that they could put together and that will also increase the number of bidders. So that's part of the idea. The problem, of course, is if we don't know which projects we're going to choose, if we don't, if we leave situation currently, then we would have to go to town meeting for every lease for each individual building. And so the current article that we have before us, which allows the select board to write leases, and I learned at the select board meeting that only the select board can write the lease, even if it's under the care, custody and control of the school committee, but of course, since it's under your care, custody and control, the select board can't write a lease without your support, without your permission. So it requires, you know, it's a joint effort on, on the part of both committees. So if, the town of Concord passed a similar article back around 2017, I think, where they made a long list of all the buildings that they thought were possible and gave the select board the authority to write those leases just for that purpose, for solar arrays and batteries, no other purposes. And of course, any project would go through the standard permitting process that Hingham passed for any other, any other project. That's where there would be room for public input in projects like that. So our proposal is that town meeting authorize, but not require the select board to sign leases for the purposes of putting solar arrays or batteries on town properties, including school properties. So that's why I'm here today asking for your support.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Tim?
What's the lifespan of a solar array?
2020, 20 to 25 years.
Okay.
And then what that means is at those, at a certain period of time is going to diminish in its output, but it isn't necessarily not producing. So you can get to that moment where technically his life is over and is producing at, I don't know, 50, 60% and say, that's great, we'll just leave him up for a while and keep collecting that free electricity and then replace it at a later date. You don't have to replace it the minute its life is over.
Would it, if I can ask a follow-up, would it makes, would it only make sense to put a solo because of that lifespan, put it on a new roof that where the roof would last as long as the solar array?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that question. It's very important that it be on a roof that's going to last that long, although another thing to know is that having solar panels on your roof extends the life of the roof because obviously it protects it to some degree from the, from the elements. But so that is one of the crucial pieces of choosing the list of projects. So one idea we got from another town was they, when they put out a similar RFP, they included the analysis of the roof in the bid so that the developers would look at the roofs themselves and you would be paying obviously for the analysis of the roof, but you would get it that way. We have analyses of some town roofs, but I think the, there was a plan to do an overall, oh no, some, some school roofs. The town roofs, we don't have, there was a plan to do such a study, it's on hold, I think, right now. So our thought is that we would go that route where we don't know the life of a roof. Some of them we do, obviously, some of them we don't. I'll give for an example, the middle school, which is at, at, you know, about 10 years now. And this, the gym was built, what was called solar ready at the time, but what that meant was it's strong enough to hold up solar arrays, but it doesn't have any of the electrical switches and interconnections that you'd require today. A solar ready roof, such as the one that will be at Foster and at the public safety building, will have all the electricity built in and ready to go. But, so that roof is at the point where if we weren't going to do that right now, then we're waiting until, you know, we replace the roof before we go back and do that. So all of those things come into the, come into the, all of the, there's a whole lot of parameters that go into choosing the list of, you know, number one, number two, number three possibilities.
And Laura came in to talk to the sustainable budget task force two years ago, I think, and we talked about the middle school and we were talking about it at the time. And I think we had said, you know, we've got a 20-year life and the cost of it would be about, it would cost about 14 years to, to gain the benefit of the electricity we'd get. So we were right at that cusp where we'd have about six years of, of free electricity.
But we believe if you look broadly across the town, there's some really, really attractive roofs and properties out there and it's, you know, the select board did choose finding revenue sources as one of their goals this year. So again, disappointed that we can't go to town meeting with a nice proposal to, you know, to develop a revenue, a new revenue source, but I hope we can do that soon.
We can all go to Capital Outland Wednesday to argue for a new roof for the high school.
Are we going to have to argue for that?
I just think it's arguing for itself.
Yes, I know.
So you know, if I had to say, what is the question that I've gotten the most since I've been on the light board, it's when are we going to have some solar panels on the high school?
Actually, currently do.
I know, I know about them. There is a small demonstration project for educational purposes, but it does not provide any electricity for the grid. So I think we're looking forward to, you know, getting that roof done because it is one of the top, top possible sites if it has a new roof.
And as you mentioned, Foster will have the solar ready because anytime we take MSBA money now, I think we have to have it solar ready if we're doing a roof with that money. So.
When other towns would have done this, how long do the leases usually last?
They, they last for the life of, the life of the solar, the projected life of the solar array. So it would be 20 years or 25 years, whatever, whatever they're willing to commit to for, I mean, they have to imagine that they're going to get their money for this array to pay it off and make money. So if that's 20 years, if that's 25 years, it will be something in that, in that ballpark.
And you talk about the difference between a lease and a license and we cannot revoke a lease.
Not for 20 years.
Right.
You know, unless, I mean, the lease will have terms and the terms will include decommissioning and roof maintenance and things like that. So unless they violate the lease somehow, no, we could not.
Yes, so you mentioned the Foster and the public safety building. Are there any other buildings that you're looking at as top candidates for roofs?
The top candidate would be a canopy at the Carlson Field parking lot.
Okay.
So, and you know, but there are places in town where I think where canopies might not be accepted, but of course, one of the two largest arrays in Hingham is across the street from the Carlson Street parking lot.
Right.
So hopefully that would be, people would view that as a good idea.
Great. Anybody else? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Jacqueline.
So it's on the list. So I, I did, I was talking about a parking lot, you know, a canopy at FAR and there's a couple of considerations there. One is that that is an official scenic road and an official scenic road, if it's a scenic road, that protects trees and stone walls, neither which would be affected. But I know that the people are very, the people who live on that street are very, they feel strongly about their scenic road. So that's one issue. And the other issue is that when I mentioned it to my son, Hingham High School graduate, he said, oh, great, more things for 16-year-old drivers to run into. And I, I immediately backpedaled on, on that as, but we have considered the teacher parking lot as, as a possibility. And I understand you're thinking about putting the near, yeah, the back lot, but also there's some discussion, I think, of making nearer into a, into a teacher parking lot, but I shouldn't, I can't. That was a rumor, I'm sorry.
Carlos always used to talk about the walkway from.
The walkway and that is, that is an interesting possibility and I, and I've had conversations about that and we do, I think that's in our, that's, I don't know, I can't remember if we put that in our tool or not. It's not ideally oriented because it runs, the walkway runs north to south. So if you try to picture how, how the south-facing canopies will work, but it's, you know, it's worth, it's worth thinking about.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you. I hope I can count on your support at town meeting.
Yes.
Thanks.
Get my support. Okay. All right, so nine point three to approve overnight and out-of-state athletic field trips and act as appropriate. I think I saw Jim Quattramoni. Yep. Online.
Hello?
Yay.
Hey.
Hey, sorry about that. We know why Ayesha can fix it.
I called the island over there. Sorry, I didn't think that.
Uh, thank, no, everybody else could hear you, it was just us.
Thank you for the extra effort there, whoever.
Yeah, Ayesha. She's a gem. She does it all.
The owl was the owl.
The owl, yeah. The everything, I'm sorry, Ayesha, you're just capable of everything. Never allowed to go anywhere. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you, thank you.
So we have some overnights to approve?
Yes, you have two through overnight, which is a recurring regular trip, and then you have three boys lacrosse to approve, which is a rotating, one year they come to us, next year we show it now.
Okay. And my only, yeah, as Michelle was saying, this is pretty self-explanatory. The only question I have, because I'm reminded every time I look at these agendas, it says field trips are not to be scheduled during the first or last week of any term and then no sophomores may go on field trips in the month of March and no field trips are to be scheduled in May and June. Are these outside of, yeah.
None of these will be missing. None of these will be missing any of the school day.
Okay, so this is after, got it. Okay. Great. Okay, thank you.
I think they're weekends.
They're weekends. All right, great, thank you. I always forget that until I re-review everything. Okay, does anybody else have any good questions? No? All right. Do the honors?
Sure. Do you want to do them separately?
Sure.
All right. I'll move to approve the boys lacrosse field trip to Huntington, New York on March 23rd and 24th, 2024.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the boys lacrosse field trip to Simsbury, Connecticut on April 13th, 2024.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved.
And I'll make a motion to approve boys lacrosse field trip to Pinkerton, New Hampshire on April 27th, 2024.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then.
Two more.
Yeah, this, are there two more?
Oxford, New Hampshire.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No. Yeah.
I am so sorry.
Yeah, it's, yeah, those were the lacrosse and now it's the crew.
All right, thank you. Yeah. All right, sorry. Two more. So I'll make a motion to approve the boys and girls crew teams, May 11th, 2024 to Bulldog Landing Hooks at New Hampshire.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And the boys and girls crew team on May 18th, 2024, field trip to Wilson's Landing in Hanover, New Hampshire.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Jim, you are all set.
Except he's got the next one.
Oh, except you've got the next one, sorry.
We have one over there.
One more question that I have though.
One for the next waiver.
Margaret and Ayesha, for you, I saw that the boosters are covering some of the cost of these. I don't know whether we need to.
We have approvals.
Get approvals?
Yes.
Okay, so does Jim know that?
We'll work with Jim.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. Okay, so nine point four to review request for the athletic waiver for the JV softball and act as appropriate.
So this is an eighth grade waiver for a JV softball program. The way that I've written the waiver and presented it to the district athletic committee for approval is that it's JV only. The way the rule is written, it states that we can use the eighth graders if, if we have approval on the lowest level offered. I've written the waiver so that if for some reason we didn't have enough to offer a JV program, I would need to come back to the DAC and subsequently to you to use eighth graders on our C team. I have no intention of doing that, I'm just putting it in fail safe so that all involved know that that isn't going to sneak up us.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? All right.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the recommendation of, for a waiver of the eighth grade student athletes to participate on the JV softball team.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
All right. Now you're all set, Jim, I think.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the sound trouble there.
No, thank you for bearing with us. Okay, nine point five to receive a report on the winter student assessments. So I think, okay, Katie's going to kick us off. Saw many people on the report.
It's a panic phone call. Texted us because I thought it wasn't on the agenda today because it was called something else.
I know, it's the highlight.
These are the moments we live for, Katie.
Absolutely, absolutely. He gave me a panic, I'm like, I thought I saw it on the agenda. Well, this is what has now become a routine presentation to the school committee. So this represents our second full year of implementation of our full MTSS, including data protocols. And so as you are aware, we will be giving a beginning of year, middle of year and end of year report on student data. And Sherry, this does not seem to be working, so I might.[1721.41] And Sherry, this does not seem to be working, so I might. I know, Ayesha. So this slide is now very familiar to you. It gives you an overview of our multi-tiered system of support, which is the way in which we identify and address the strengths and needs of all of our students through data-driven decision-making, progress monitoring, and evidence-based supports. The highlights of our MTSS strategic focus areas for this year include continuing to strengthen our protocols with an emphasis this year on our professional learning communities in which the data is taken a look at by the entire team, our classroom teachers, our administrators, and our MTSS specialists. This year, we also focused on really adding some additional training around iReady, My Path, and That Use. Last year, as you know, we had a real emphasis on math instructional practices, and we're continuing those math coaching cycles to support Tier One instruction. But really, the big news this year was, in fact, our implementation of a new evidence-based elementary reading program. And I know that we are all interested to see how that plays out in our data. As I gave a sneak preview at a recent select board meeting, the data thus far is very positive. And so we're pleased tonight to present some of the grade-level specific data related to our reading program. Just a review of the diagnostic assessments that we use. So in K to three, our early literacy screener is the Acadians, formerly known as DIBELS assessment. In grades three to five, we use iReady reading. And we use in K to six, iReady math diagnostic. So tonight you'll be receiving an update on those, on those assessments. And just to kind of share the power of some of these assessments, they really allow us to drill down into very specific skills so we can match students with the most relevant support. So, for example, our early literacy Acadians DIBELS screener drills down into the subtests, including things like first sound fluency, phoneme segmentation, nonsense word fluency, and oral reading fluency. So this allows us to really, again, drill down and to match students with the supports that they need. Similarly, in our iReady reading, we're getting into some of the more advanced literacy subtests. In addition to some of those phonics and phonological awareness subtests, we're also starting to assess students' ability to comprehend literature, comprehend informational text, and taking a look at their mastery of vocabulary. And so these assessments, again, inform the supports that we give to students. So it informs our Tier One core instruction, and it informs the types of interventions that we provide through our Tier Two, which are some targeted supports, and Tier Three, our more intensive supports. And so tonight I'd like to welcome Mary Andrews, who will share some literacy data.
All right. So here we are at our middle-of-the-year report, a little preview for our Acadians, formerly known as DIBELS. Next, we're going to, just a quick reminder that unlike iReady, we're looking at kind of a moving target in Acadians where the benchmarks move. But even with those moving benchmarks, we're looking at more than 80% of kindergarteners at or above grade level, the middle-of-year assessments, almost three-quarters of first grade, almost 80% of second. Those average scores continue to fall in the above-grade level range, even with the trickier benchmarks of the middle-of-year assessments. And we'll look at Grade Two as one of the only grade levels that across the district we saw a slight dip. But that, when we look at the year-to-year data, that's what we see. When we look at that cohort data of that particular grade, we see some distinct growth. So we'll look at those things today. Okay, so this is our kindergarten crew. The 2020, now that we're in the mid-year 2020, is the test that would have happened right before the world broke down. And then we see the expected dips that we see, that we know of for the following winter data. And then our climb back up, and we have some nice growth there, up to 82% of students at or above benchmark in kindergarten, okay? Just a reminder, these columns on either side show you how, when we're looking, just how the students did from beginning to middle, how those rates change, right? That 38 that would have earned us a blue score above grade level would put us squarely in the red if that were happening at the middle of the year. But it's also worth remembering that, you know, so it's not the expected just plodding toward growth that we see in iReady, that things are changing, and not only the benchmarks, but also the subtests. So we have a few variables that we're looking at. So it's not an apples-to-apples moment that we ever have with Acadians. This is just an overview, just to let you know how that does change when those composite scores are calculated, and the different subtests that are considered at each phase of the year. So there are multiple things happening at each, at each administration of the assessments. In general, if we look at the, this would be like an example of the first sound fluency subtest. And here you'd see how they first have their phoneme seg subtest at the middle of the year, they don't even have one at the beginning of the year. So that's why the calculations, of course, have to be different. Same here with nonsense word fluency, fluency for correct letter sounds. In first grade, we are noticing that, again, we have that beginning of, you know, where we knew we were in 2020, that dip in 2021. And then pretty much flat data from last year to this, when, no math whiz, but the way that things average, when you're calculating from the data sheets that are produced in Acadians, you'll notice that in 22, 23, 73, and 28 is 101, and 72 and 27 is 99. So we have a percentage of wiggle room, and with that, it's the way that it rounds. So with those figures in mind, the, what we had for the middle-of-the-year data last year is pretty much the same as what we had when we're looking at year-to-year. Again, we'll see that it would be very different when we look at iReady. We wouldn't ever want to see 71% at the beginning of the year and only 72% at the middle of the year, because we need to be moving on a solid trajectory toward the end-of-the-year goals. But again, it's a game changer, the fact that the benchmarks all change, which you can see represented. Here's the calculation for what the children are asked to do at the beginning of the year in first grade versus the middle of the year, so that even though we're looking at these against each other, we're no longer looking at phoneme seg by the beginning, by the middle of the year, first grade. And then we have the nonsense word fluency, the correct letter sound, whole world's red, and then the oral reading fluency scores. And this is their first efforts with that, and it's tricky. These passages are hard. This was the grade I was talking to you about, about second grade. If we look at just sheerly percentage numbers, and if you recall, the reason that the first two columns are grayed out is we didn't have all hands on deck at that time, so we don't have all four schools considered at those two data points for those years. And, and so that, of course, throws things off. So we're really looking at the last three years when we're trying to draw some conclusions about that data. You know, and I see that 6% drop out of the at-or-above benchmark, and more in below benchmark, and, you know, that certainly is something that we want to look at and have looked at more, and certainly drill down into, you know, the school data and classroom data, and all the things that we're doing behind the scenes. But it is interesting that it's still percentage points higher than the first grade data that was relatively flat, I think that came in at 74 or something. But this would be one, before we hit the panic button, we want to look at the cohort data, anytime we see a drop. And if we look at these same children when they were kindergartners at the middle of the year in 2022, and 2023 as first graders, and 2024, we do see some nice growth with that particular cohort. So these are all the different ways that we have to look at the data instead of just sort of the snapshot in a vacuum. Again, that, it would be very concerning if we went from 82% to 79% on an iReady assessment from beginning to the middle of the year. It's looked at as a little bit more expected when we have those benchmarks moving so drastically. Okay, and here are their, you'll notice this oral reading fluency retail quality, our rainbow looks a little bit different. It's only because for that particular test, they, their score is one or two or two-plus, and all of the at-or-above grade level scores just come in at that two, two-plus. So it's only green is an option, and there is no red. You can't necessarily get a zero on it. You can get a one, which would put you in the yellow, but the accuracy piece is more considered in that first score. But that's why that one looks a little bit different. Again, this is what we're looking at for Grade Two and the different calculations that give us the composite score at each part of the year. When we jump to our, the way that we assess our three-to-five, grade three-to-five, our takeaways, we were really happy, to say the least, about the progress toward the typical annual growth that we saw at all three grade levels. We are seeing that in grades four and five, so they've all exceeded the year-end growth expectation for those groups. You're supposed to be at 50% by halfway of the year, and they're all at or past 100%. And then in grades four and five, the special education cohorts' growth is outpacing the all-student numbers that we're getting. Again, these are the numbers that we want to see, that wouldn't, would be lovely to see in Acadians, but it wouldn't be an expectation, that we're moving from 66% on our above-grade level at the beginning of the year, up to 88% in the third grade, 61 up to 78% in fourth grade, and 63 up to 80% in fifth grade. When we're looking, when we start to drill down into the domain areas for both special education cohorts and all students in grades three and four, we're seeing that challenge area, surprise, surprise, informational text. But we are seeing Grade Five in, for both special education students and the student body looked at as a whole, and that grade level as vocabulary is emerging as our challenge area. So we're paying close attention to that. This is a few ways, a few different ways of looking at that progress toward annual growth. 129% for third grade, 107 for fourth, and 129 for fifth. Those comp numbers underneath are from the third grade last year, and the fourth grade last year, and the fifth grade last year, if not this same cohort. So it's pretty excellent growth that we're seeing already. When we look at the students with disabilities, grade three comes in at 100% compared to 104 last year, grade four, 120, they were at 118 last year, and then grade five really is, is really fascinating to look at with the 137% in the progress toward annual growth figure as compared to the 77% that they came in at last year. This is just another graph that shows that progress toward annual growth, it's a little bit easier to see the comps. The name of the game in iReady is more green, less red. And so as we're traveling through yellow to get to green, that, that, that middle bar can expand or shrink depending on how many people are moving up from red. So we see some really nice progress there. That's the breakdown of the numbers that I previewed for you at each of the three grade levels, and that's for all students. This is how it looks for special education. It's interesting when we look at Grade Five, which, you know, had the 15% moved out of that red zone, and 17% moved into the green zone. We still say, well, 36, that's not a number. I'm a fan of, in terms of N, about 45, 46 students, so we're talking about 16-ish students in the district in that red zone at this juncture. But it's also worth noting, when we think of looking at cohort, the growth for that group was the, was the largest we've seen so far. That 137 figure belongs to them. So that's really worth keeping in mind when we look at data, too. The domain comparisons that we previewed here, this would be for all students in Grade Three and how they're doing in each area. That faded line represents where they were in the fall. And then the darker lines are where they are now, or where they were last month, hopefully even further along now. This is how it's shaking out for the students with disabilities. Okay, Grade Four. These are interesting numbers, especially because of those three grade levels, it has our highest number of students with disabilities, 67, I think. It was like 45-ish, 65-ish, 45 for three, four, five. So those numbers are especially good. Here's the students with disability figure when we're looking at Grade Four and how they're moving. Grade Five are all students, and how they're playing, how the domains are playing out for them. This is what I mentioned to you before about how vocabulary is, if we're at the, a night at the races, vocabulary, for better or worse, is eking out informational text. And that's the same true of the special education cohort, too. I don't know if we want to do questions now or after both disciplines, Tim? I'm ready. Okay, no, that's good.
If it's, what would trigger an intervention? Does landing in the red trigger an intervention, or?
That definitely triggers an intervention. That would, almost all of our students in the red would be in a Tier Three group. But yellow also triggers intervention, Tier Two groups. It doesn't always equate color to grouping.
Right.
But for the most part, especially because when you're looking at sort of five percentage-ish in the, in the red, I mean, in the Tier Three groups, and then 15-ish in the yellows, and then at that TRI time where the rest of the students are getting what they need as well, whether that's on-grade-level instruction or enrichment beyond grade level. So, but, and if you remember from that slide, I don't think we included it today, but that other slide that we have about all the other data points that we also collect, these are the two biggies with Acadians and iReady, but there are definitely other data points that they consider and keep track of on their data sheets, which are pretty detailed sheets. So there might be students who are borderline here but really doing well on all the other assessments, and that's less cause for worry or placement. And then same on the flip side, if you could be borderline here in the green, but if other things look really off, you could still be in a Tier Two intervention group. So it's colors-ish, but it's not exact.
Evidence active that the subtests matter, so when we're designing intervention groups, we're really looking at those subtests and looking at ways to group students with similar needs.
Mary, if you could briefly maybe talk about next steps? I know the reading specialists met before break. What are some next steps planned to sort of address some of the gaps in the data?
Sure. So one of the things that, it's an interesting thing, you, you don't know what you don't know until you go through a whole adoption year, right? So so far, I've been really thrilled and grateful. First of all, has to be said, with all the work that the teachers have done, this lift has been monumental. And that we've had the reading teams, reading specialists, pilot teachers, interventionists all working on these common approach to the scope and sequence, and common approach to the pacing guides. And so now they're meeting, we're still had PD in different areas throughout the course of the year and last year, and lots of training. But now we're looking to make decisions of, okay, we went through Module Three, is there some time that we could buy back there that we don't necessarily need this week of because we want to dedicate some time for designated MCAS practice? Or, you know, things that if we overshot with how many modules we want to fit in, the last two modules are review, they all, they have 12 modules in 11 and 12 review. So now they're meeting, they're meeting on March 6th with those teams to start to look at where we are now in Module Seven, what are our tweaks? They've been keeping running logs about how to evolve and adapt. And some of the things that they've been looking at, to Margaret's point, when we, there was sort of an inter-reading pivot over the summer, not, it was a good thing, and we knew it was coming when we were purchasing the product, but to this structured literacy designation, which has involved a little bit more work on the part of the reading specialists and reading teams to do some crosswalking for supports that match up a little bit better. And, and also reviewing the change in the order of the phonics that's taught in the new program, and reviewing that, and trying to match that up to any sort of areas that that we might see differences from last year to this year. But, you know, it feels like it has been a very smooth launch, but that hasn't been without a lot of work behind the scenes from that whole group and all of those teachers who are taking it on with fidelity, right? That we're making sure that everybody's doing the thing and staying on pace, even at times where it seems a little bit frantic this first time through. But that doesn't mean that we haven't encountered some hurdles, which we'd expect with the online assessment piece that we've been playing with a little bit. It's a little clunky, you can't adapt, you can adapt the assessments that are, that you can modify for a paper version, but because of the way it sorts by standards, you can't manipulate the online versions of the assessments. So if there are questions that don't make sense, or if Monica, our writing specialist, is doing a great job trying to tailor some of the writing prompts to make more sense for what we need them to be practicing, that's something that's sort of, that's one more step that they're doing by having a sidebar sort of, project this on your classroom screen and use this template that she made. So we're coming up with our workarounds, and we've had some nice time to work as a team. So we're coming up with our workarounds and we've had some nice time to work as a team to try to go back and trying to keep thorough notes as we go through, but also leaving the time to go back and and really figure out how to make some choices for next year that are still consistent district-wide, not that one school's going to be like, oh, we hit a module four, but you know, so that's where we are right now in the review.
I would just add, too, in addition to all of the amazing work being done for the tier-one instruction through the inter-reading program, we're also planning additional professional development. So we'll be offering this summer the IMSE, Orton Gillingham, plus the thirty-hour course. We'll be opening it up to our special educators, reading specialists, reading interventionists. And then if we have some additional spots, we'll also open it up to our general educators. So we're nearly at capacity already. We just, thirty.
Thirty, okay.
Yeah, thirty. So, and so we'll be working on some of the other professional development beyond our core instructional programs. Thank you.
Can I ask another question? The most popular person in the room asking philosophical questions in a long wait. And it's a really philosophical one, but it's something that I struggle with during these presentations. We're seeing this data that looks really great, that looks like the numbers-wise, at least not, I don't know about the cohorts, but certainly with the grade levels, that our numbers are now above where they were before COVID. How should we, on school committee, think about and talk about COVID learning loss? Are we post-COVID learning loss?
I'd like to throw that.
There's an answer to that. It's just something I struggle with, thinking about this.
Along those same lines, I think we have the same, the same sort of, I think that it's good time now to temper our expectations as far as like, the recovery has been great. It would never be the expectation that at the beginning of the year, everybody's
Yeah.
in the green and blue, you know? So that, that's one thing I worry about. Like, when I saw the the data come back for the growth, I was like, oh, what happens at the end of the year? I don't know. So, so I hear you because I think it's tied to my own, you know, and there, again, there are so many variables, it's, it's hard to.
I know, it's an impossible question to answer. I'm really sorry.
Thanks, Tim. Can you think of a harder one for Dave?
I know. Build up HTSS and it's working.
Absolutely. That is, that is definitely the biggest takeaway, but it does, maybe it's the Irish in me when things start going, like, oh, gosh, we gotta prepare for disaster. But, but yes, I think that it's been through a lot of, a lot of concentrated efforts that that we're, we're seeing, the results that we're seeing.
I mean, I would, in my read, actually, I was surprised, like kindergarten looks like what I would have expected in terms of like, we started here before COVID and you had this like massive drop off and then it's going well. First and second, it's actually, it was less of a drop off and it's kind of like consistent, you know, really across the board.
Especially.
In some ways, I actually attributed, where I was going, I was like, well, you know, kindergartners, you know, there was that one year they were affected, but like the new kindergartners, the last couple of years weren't in school during COVID. First and second were a little bit.
Yeah.
One of the foundational skills of literacy is oral language.
Yeah.
So I was just thinking about how does that correlate with the first and second graders beginning to learn to read with the numbers we're seeing in increased language, speech and language services as well.
And that's nationwide, that speech and language.
And I think technology-wise, you see a lot of young people, younger, using devices and we're doing less talking to kids in general. And so we just, we just need to increase that oral language piece. I think another thing that we're doing is trying to really target particular groups of classrooms or groups of kids and how can we support particular grades in first and second grade would be grades that are targets of the reading specialists, the principals, and trying to work with the teachers to say, how do we meet the needs of those particular kids even more? So that's some of the work that was done before break and will continue into the spring. But I would agree, I think oral language would be something I would say, is that impacting those first and second grade scores?
Yeah, and it's an interesting thing because that's all the DIBELS assessment is, right? That the kids are having to articulate those answers for you in a way that's not just
And just thinking about their worldview, they have, you know, they were dealing with masks everywhere and not being able to see the mouths and how they form languages and it's difficult.
Yeah. That increased need for speech-language pathology services nationwide has been really.
Well, thank you. It's hardly an unanswerable question.
No, that's okay. I hope you have a harder one and yes, really try to stump him. Thank you.
So we have a lot less math data, so I'll go quickly and sort of reiterating some of the things that Mary said. In general, you don't need me to talk you through every single domain graph. If you've seen the report, you've seen the report, the green is growing, the red is shrinking, which generally things are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So we're seeing the growth, but I will highlight a few things. Again, at all grade levels except grade two, we are exceeding expectations for typical annual growth. For our special education students in grades one, three, and five, they're actually exceeding the expectations at a higher rate than the general ed, which I thought was terrific. And actually, all grade levels are showing, and we don't have that long-range data, Mary's like, well, four, five years and kind of see those trends, this is year two here, at least we're pretty much seeing similar growth to last year, again, with the exception of grade two, which is, which is nice. And then I think the big thing that sort of jumps out, the growth for our special education cohort in grade six was particularly low. We'll see it when, kind of, I'll jump down to that slide and we'll kind of discuss that a little bit. So I'll skip through a bunch of slides, but I would stop here again, this was sort of where our growth is, as Mary sort of noted, we're supposed to be around, well, at fifty percent after through the school year. We are pretty much at fifty or above fifty with the exception of grade two. Grade two is at sixty-two last year at this time, so we'll see again, Mary kind of caught, commented on that cohort a little bit in general, so we'll see over time, particularly if that's a cohort issue. I have, I did meet with the specialists a couple weeks ago just to sort of bring this to their attention, so is there anything you're currently aware of that is jumping up to you? And they said, no, we'll dig into it, started looking at it a little bit more closely. But there was no one unique thing that they said, oh, it's sort of this. So again, looking at the growth and generally in a very good spot and same in grade six, our growth here also very good. I would skip ahead to, oh, these slides are not numbered, but one of the things that I did want to note, I'm sorry. Going too fast. Again, these were the placement distributions, green getting bigger, red getting smaller. I'm happy to go back and look at things individually, but I'm kind of respectful of your time at this late hour, so we can definitely go back and talk specifically about things. But for grade six in particular, one of the things I was thinking about is that a lot of the geometry and measurement data, again, is much later in the year, particularly in grade six. And so what I actually noted, when we see the difference from beginning of the year, this is again for all students, not students with disabilities, but when we see the difference in the domains for geometry and measurement, there isn't much there. The beginning of the year is so focused on algebraic thinking and numbers and operations. And so when I think about that and you can actually see the difference in the red, our students really, you know, pretty much cut it in half here and here, but there hasn't been much of a change here because we haven't covered those topics yet. And so when I was thinking about our students with disability data, some of those students have not shown, have actually gone backwards in that domain because the way that iReady is built, it expects more of you at the middle of the year. It doesn't, no, it's not program-specific, so it doesn't actually know what you've learned and when you learn it, which is why, you know, the end-of-the-year data is the most important piece. But it might, I'm not trying to explain away the situation, but I'm trying to understand the situation. And I think that is at least a little bit of a contributing factor to what might be going on there. As we jump ahead here, as you can see, this is our growth for overall growth and our special ed subgroup as well. The grade six data in particular, again, really jumps out there with our special ed cohort at twenty-five percent. Interestingly, we really focused on K through six. We have been also using this in seven and eight this year in our math seven course and our math eight course. And it's a little bit more of like a first time through and pilot, so we're in a, the cohorts are different because they're down to about a hundred and ten kids using it as opposed to, you know, two hundred and eighty, three hundred kids. But for grade seven, overall growth was fifty-eight percent and our sped subgroup was seventy-nine percent. And for grade eight, the overall growth is a hundred and ten percent and our sped subgroup was ninety-one percent. So there's a lot of growth there, too. And I went back and looked, just looked that up this morning because I was thinking about the sixth grade data, it's really jumping out as a concern, and I just wanted to kind of bring in that other data from the middle school because I think it's important to kind of highlight that a little bit. And if I jump ahead, again, sort of trying to think about that sixth grade data, that really jumps out to me, again, this is where I showed you that overall data for the domains. We have a much larger group of sixth grade students in special education math courses, which we tend to focus that curriculum much more significantly on algebraic thinking to start the year and really tackle those concepts because those concepts will endure through every single thing that they do. There are times to, there's plenty of time in the curriculum all the way through high school to make up on certain geometry topics. So a lot of times we see these things less, but to that point, iReady is expecting more of students at this time of year, even though the students theoretically maybe haven't even learned that data. And so you see something going backwards and go, well, why is it going backwards so much? It's not necessarily that the students are going backwards, but that the expectation in that group, I think, may be jumping out. So again, not trying to explain it away, but I think that might be where it's happening. And I plan to actually sit down with some of the sixth grade teachers to specifically discuss this next week. So those are some of the, that was really the big thing to me that jumped out. Again, I was trying to be respectful of your time. In general, everything looks good. The green is really growing, the red is shrinking in the domains, in the general ed classrooms and in the special education classrooms, general education data and the special education data, we're seeing that in both cases. So that's sort of the quick overview of the math data and I will open up to questions.
Carrie?
I'm not saying anything.
I was just wondering, and I might have misunderstood, Mary, when you were talking about the DIBELS, how the targets changed throughout the year with the assessments and, but you said with iReady, they don't. Is it different for math? Because you made a comment about how it expects more of students.
It, it expects that you may have learned more further into the year, that you may have learned more sixth grade concepts already.
Okay.
And you don't know, because it's an adaptive assessment, it'll, it sort of dips its toe into a grade six concept, and you know it, and if you get it right, you know, good, questions get more difficult or easier. And so at the beginning of the year data, it's really testing your ability to be ready for grade six. So it's really kind of going back into grade five questions. And you may proceed into grade six questions because of what you know or your problem-solving skills. But at this point in the year, it's now asking you specific grade six questions. So there could be questions about surface area in there that I know we don't teach surface area until chapter nine or ten. It's one of the very last things we do at the end of the year. The data about histograms, bar graphs, box whisker plots, all of that stuff is a project that's done at the very end of the year as well. So, but the program itself is now trying to assess where you are along that sixth grade curriculum.
Okay.
And so it's going to ask you, because it asks questions from all sections, it will now start asking you some questions that you may not have seen. So I guess that's what I mean by it might expect more of you.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
All the domains that are, because the skill-based, they're all being taught all the time. It's not like first you learn this and then you, you know, you're working on the vocabulary and reading it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
All the time.
Great, thank you.
Dave, if you'd talk briefly about next steps for the spring?
I'd say a quick one, talking about the interventions, I'm sorry.
Interventions and then next step.
Yeah. When, I know part of MTSS is trying to get about five percent of the students to have the level three, tier-three supports. What if we have numbers like the sixth grade special ed that say more students need them than the five percent?
It's a very good question. We do, so we provide as much intervention as we possibly can. The way that the middle school intervention is sort of provided is from the, from the MTSS side of things is through either Math Lab or through some extra push-in support from the Math Lab or interventionists. And so depending on where students are, they may get more push-in services into their actual classroom or they may get, you know, they'll, they'll have the two extra days of Math Lab. And so we try to schedule as many students into Math Lab as possible. Sometimes it also doesn't fit with other services as well, which is a difficulty. So when it doesn't fit, we're really trying to make sure if we can't do that, that we're shifting into trying to provide some more of the push-in services, which was a big shift that Mr. Smith and I worked on this year, was trying to get more of that because we were, one, missing kids that needed intervention and, two, there were certain, you know, certain students who were at a point where they had to give up something that they really loved for two more days of math and.
The tough sell.
Really, really tough sell and, you know, tough sell for, for myself and Mr. Smith, too, to say, no, no, you have to do this, this is more important than that one thing you really love about school, right? Which neither one of us philosophically believe that way, you know, kids need to have things that they really want to enjoy at school. So not a perfect science. Wish it were, but it's generally what we're doing and.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So next steps, middle school, we're still trying to kind of refine sort of this MTS model and how we can best serve all of the students. You know, one of the trickier things, you know, to be honest with you, the, so we've been piloting in earnest, MyPath, iReady, MyPath is through eighth grade. The older the students get, they are not loving the program and more vocal about that, so it's a harder sell. And so we've been working through trying to, you know, how can we sort of incentivize kids, motivate kids, encourage them? Some of it is, you know, some kids are just, they love the idea of having a goal of self-improvement. Fantastic, that's, that's wonderful, but not all kids do. And so then we're trying to find ways to kind of, try to motivate kids. For some of them, it's, it was sort of bringing some of that MyPath into, you know, homework grade or part of, part of the class, you know, how do we make that part of the class without losing a ton of class time and trying to blend that in? So that was one part of it. The other piece, again, is we're really trying to think carefully about how we schedule people next year, our intervention and support staff in particular, so that we'll have the, as much flexibility as possible to get more people push and support. One of the difficult things with Math Lab, again, is that the middle school, our policy has always been if parents don't want their students taking it, we're not going to force it. And so we have a lot of, a lot of parents who opt out a lot. So that's another thing that we have to begin to work on. And I think long-term, again, as we start to understand this data a little bit, this has been really helpful in conversations. You know, MCAS is, is one thing, it's its own thing, but this helps us with, you know, it's a, it's a different piece of data, that's not just the teacher's opinion, that provides some local norming, we can provide national norming, we can be specific about where students may struggle. And so it really helps through that conversation a little bit. So I think that's something we've got to think about how we're going to, and we talked about next steps, is how we begin to communicate that to parents a little bit without it being alarming as well, because sometimes people can feel alarmed, like, oh, you know, my child is in the yellow, what does that mean? Are they behind? And, you know, there's a big range in that yellow and a lot of times you're in the yellow and you're fine because by the end of the year, you have learned everything you need to learn and things are going to be okay. So trying ways to sort of balance that. So that's one of the next steps. Again, at the elementary school, the PLCs have been fantastic, the interventionists have really been able to get a lot more time to converse with educators about what the data actually means and then talk about best practices for sort of teaching different, different lessons in a way that they may not have thought. We have real, true math professionals sitting down with a group of teachers and saying, have you ever tried doing this, 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 or this? So the PLCs has been a big, big debt. We are slowly looking at elementary math programs. We are slowly looking at elementary math programs. And we just recently did a site visit for illustrative math at Needham, working on a site visit for Reveal. And again, right now, that's just myself and the math specialists. It's a small start, just really trying to make sure we understand what options we'll have at some point down the road, you know? There's a lot of considerations to put into that, but that is a very big next step that will be coming at some point in time. I'll stop there.
So he, he talked about the flexibility at the middle school. Aren't we pulling some specialists? We're, we're not necess, we're going to have less specialists next year, correct?
Those are the tutors.
Oh, the tutors. Got it. Okay. All right. Just checking. Thank you.
There he is.
No else.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Nine point six strategic plan update number two.
So I'll just go quickly through the five spokes of the strategic plan, and some of this is repetitive, so I'll, I'll just highlight really quickly because you'll also hear some of it from Dr. Cataldo in some places right afterwards, and you heard some of it earlier. For the first one, talking about a culture of collaboration and community, you'll hear from us probably at, definitely at a March meeting about the Student Opportunity Act. What you're going to see in the Student Opportunity Act is an alignment with the strategic plan. We'll focus, it looks like it'll focus on MTSS, behavioral and SEL health, and students with special needs will be probably the three areas we'll be recommending, and you'll hear, and that's been a theme consistent in the last two years. We're also looking as part of the communication plan at different platforms for our website and a way of streamlining. Currently, we have like three different applications. One that when you get those robocalls, there's Blackboard Connect, and we have a different service for websites, for the website, and they don't really speak to each other. And a lot of platforms for K through twelve have a unified platform, and we're really looking at something that also is more cost effective rather than paying for three services to have one service that will do multiple things, including having a mobile app that people can download and have that will give them a stream of information as well. So that's in the works. The Department of Student Services is beginning its planning around transitions and really strengthening transitions between elementary, middle, and middle and high school. And the middle and high school are also ramping up their transition activities. The second spoke around culturally responsive teaching and learning. You've heard several times around professional learning communities at the elementary level, which have allowed staff to be looking at literacy and math data on an ongoing basis as well as writing. You've heard about our special ed program evaluation, you'll hear that from Dr. Cataldo as well. You'll hear from Dr. Cataldo as well about the new IEP and the work that's being done to prepare for that. You've heard about the draft of the D cap and completing that work by the end of the year, and you've heard about the preschool and pre-K programming. The third spoke is around healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities. I don't think we've shared that our coaches, athletic coaches at the high school participated in a day-long training with Northeastern University Center for the Study of Sports and Society as part of a nationwide initiative on addressing hate in school sports. They participated in a professional development session, and we hope to do that again next year to include even more coaches and are going to pursue some state funding to see if we can also get some state funding that might be available for that. You've heard us talk about in the past about a team that's working with Medco two point O to really help us continue to develop equitable outcomes for all students. And you've heard us talk about the SEL Behavioral Health Task Force. The third, I lost my train of thought. The fourth one was capital and finance. You've voted for a warrant for the naming of the new elementary school. Purchase orders for furniture and technology are on, in the works, and we're, we will hear from an update soon about the progress at the next school building committee. We've also, the school building committee received a report on the columns of PRS, and hopefully at its next meeting will determine the next course of action. And we continue working on elements of the tech plan as well. In human resources and leadership, you've heard us talk about a hiring handbook, a faculty handbook that we hope to have done by the end of the year. We're working on strengthening the onboarding of paraprofessionals, and we've worked to strengthen our training process and onboarding for substitutes. And the middle school is also working on its scheduling, and we've talked about how we can make sure that we have time for teachers to collaborate within the schedule. And partly, the eighth grade teaming is going to really help that also in the schedule as well, and think it'll better help us meet the needs of the students in eighth grade, some of the concerns we're seeing around SEL by the teaming process.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, nine point seven, and we've heard a lot that you're going to be presenting, Dr. Cataldo.
I think I can now leave.
Student service update number two.
All right, well, I'll speak quickly, but a little bit more detail because it's freezing in here. I'm talking quickly tonight. So some of the things I chose to highlight is certainly the program review, which is, seems to have been the talk of the season. The review is now in, and we have a copy, and I believe it's being presented in a few weeks, Dr. Adams, correct?
March twelfth, that's our hope.
Two weeks. It will be presented here to the committee. I'm very excited because I think it gave us an honest and helpful way to look at our district, and I'm really proud of the work that's in there. It's really allowing us to focus on where all our strengths are. There's a lot of strengths in the district that I think have, we haven't seen, but at the same time, it's given us some areas that we really need to turn our attention to and strengthen so that we can build that trust and transparency in the district for all of our parents. In the report, it certainly talked about some of the pluses of what's happening, what's happening with our IEPs, what's happening with our inclusive practices, and dealing with preschool and early childhood programming and how we're using staff and so forth. I think it's really important that it looked at our last DESI tiered focus monitoring, which again, we're up next year for another visit from DESI, and of course, they just revamped the whole system, how they're going to be doing that in the district, all of the districts. But they'll be back, and I think this was a really timely opportunity to be taking a look, a deep dive into what we've been doing so far for the last few years. One thing that I thought was really key is that they took the time to read seventy-five IEPs, which is no easy feat, when you realize that some of those IEPs are thirty and forty pages long. And I really appreciated that because it helped us to understand how those are put together and how people view them and what do we need to do to calibrate so everybody's on the same page across the district. But I think, you know, I won't hold on to, you know, we'll share everything right now in the report, we'll get to do that in two weeks, but I'm really excited that the report is in, and I think it's going to be very helpful as we move forward in creating the path of where we need to go, and of course, with everybody's voice together to make this a really strong district. It's important to me that we do that. Another area that I focused on tonight is talking about strengthening communication in the district. We're trying to continue to build relationships. I am continuing to have monthly meetings with all my different cohorts, whether it be team chairs or speech and language pathologists. I meet weekly with my coordinators and my out-of-district coordinator, we're all together every single Tuesday. We spend about three or four happy hours together, going through everything. And if we should miss, God forbid, then we've scheduled for Thursday. That's it. There's no missing for a week. But it's been really important to me that, and it's urgent to me, that we have this really tight communication so that we can rely on each other and build. One of the things we've been focused on this year is really reviewing some of the laws that I think we've gotten away from through the times that we've had the pandemic, and now it's getting everybody back on the page. And it's not just helping everybody who's been here a while, but also incorporating all the new staff that's come along as well in the last three or four years to make sure we're on the same page. Again, that goes to calibrating what we have to make sure the whole district knows and shares the same thought process. I do meet with the CPAC monthly. They create an agenda. I will say that they have been extremely generous with their time, and I'm very beholden to them that, you know, they meet with the parents in the, in the community, and one of the things that's been very helpful is from time to time, things do pop up, and they will contact me immediately to try to understand what's happening instead of waiting a whole month while people get frustrated. They've been very kind in reaching out and having a continuous dialogue, and I think that's been really, really helpful. And they've allowed me to depend on them for information and do a cross-share of information to help build a relationship out there. I'm sure you noticed that this year they put together a pretty fabulous program of activities. I did miss the, the big one for, at the beginning of the month about homework, but I will be part of the unity meeting that's coming up on March sixteenth, so I will be there. But I also think what's really helpful is the fact that the CPAC is willing to come forward with information that might not ordinarily reach my desk. There might be a lot of tears it has to go through, or in fairness, you know, as parents, it can be really intimidating process, which we're trying to sort of demystify that process. But in the meantime, till that actually happens, they're great about reaching out with families and families communicating with them and then them bringing forward information of concern or positive outcomes that they want us to be aware of. So I wanted to highlight how valuable they've been as a partnership this past year. I've spent a lot of hours in the buildings. I try to spend as much as I can with the principals. I'm in all the buildings every week, varying what I'm doing, whether it's observing programs or I've now been attending IEP meetings, which has been very helpful for me to see the process in action. Sometimes some of those difficult conversations, team chairs have asked me to join them just to make sure I can help model some of the language and as well as just be a part of the conversation, and that's been terrific for me because it allows me to get to know families. It's been no small feat in meeting with a lot of families. I know, I think it was the Friday before the vacation, I think I met with six families in that day. So it's really important to me to get to know folks, and I continue to do that. I consider really the meat of the subject because the parents are the ones that, you know, they want to partner, and I think it's important that we make sure that happens. The other big thing that I've put out here is the new IEP. I know that people are saying, oh, we dread the new IEP, but we shouldn't dread the new IEP. Actually, I love the new IEP. I love the way it's organized. I love the way it really puts the student front and center, just the fact that we all have to look at the strengths of our students. First thing when you open up the IEP is going to be after the information is, let's talk about the student, which is different than how it's been. And so I'm really excited about that. We have training starting next week. We'll be doing a training on the early release in March, the early release in April, and then again, we're going to do two half-days in May with our faculty to get them up to speed on the IEP. I have no doubt we'll do something again in the fall because I know, like all of us, like the kids, we go home for the summer and some cobwebs grow, so I'm sure when we come back, we will be doing some work. In addition to working with our staff, I've been working with the CPAC, and we'll be doing a presentation the very first week of school with four parents. I don't know what that's going to look like yet, but we're really excited to know that we're going to use some grant money that we have, and we're going to build a program for parents to come and learn about the IEP in the first week of school that we return in September. We think it's important the parents understand so it's not so intimidating when they come into the meetings as the meetings progress, usually towards the end of September, beginning of October. I think it's critical that we do that. So that's another piece that we're doing, and at the same time, we're making sure our team chairs are well-trained. We've sent them to a number of DESI opportunities. We'll be bringing them to another opportunity through the league school in March. So I'm hoping that everybody will be ready to go, and then anybody who joins us over the summer, we'll also make sure that they're trained and ready to go along with it through either mentoring or direct instruction, but we'll make sure that happens. So that's important. And then, of course, we'll have to work hand in hand with Aspen, our student information system, to make sure everything's in place. As of this point, Aspen has created the template that we need to use. It's just kind of sitting there, lying in wait, and when we roll over all of the accounts in August, the template will become active for everybody to use. So that's it in a nutshell. I'm warm. I hope you all are. Let's talk quickly.
Any questions?
How do you feel about learning loss? No, I'm just kidding.
How many hours do you have tonight?
Yeah, seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really, and I just want to highlight the work that CPAC is doing that like.
Absolutely.
It's been such a wonderful collaborative relationship to be able to see this year, and it's been a long time coming, so.
Good.
I really appreciate that from you and from CPAC.
And, and thank all of those at CPAC. If they give up their time, it's free. And, you know, it's, it's yeoman's work.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So nine point eight to receive an update from Salary Negotiations Subcommittee. So we've been talking about this for over a year now and giving some updates, and people in the community will have seen a letter that had gone out from School Committee and Dr. Adams today, but thought that it would be a good chance for the chair of Subcommittee to give an update as well.
Yeah, great. Thank you. So as you know, we started negotiating with the paras in December of twenty-two, so it's over at it for more than a year, and then the teachers a few months later in February of twenty twenty-three. And then with the, with Unit D, it's our administrative assistance, we started, we started working with them in, in August. So it's been, it's been a long process, so I just wanted to thank the HEA negotiating team and also Tim and Michelle and Dr. Adams, Katie and Aisha. It's, we've, we've gone through a lot of things together and made a lot of progress, and we just really appreciate everyone's time. It's, it's not easy work. I don't think anyone would call it that. So it involves making some tough decisions. So one thing we've been thinking about, and it's kind of guided by the full committee, is when we consider everything, the cost of the proposals, when we do things, what's best for students? Like, that's kind of what's guiding us. And we're mindful for the end of the day, once all the contracts are ratified, we're going to need a budget that reflects our priorities as a district. And fortunately, we have the strategic plan, but Dr. Adams updated us on, and so we've laid that all out. And that was developed with a lot of feedback from the community, from staff, from teachers, and from parents and some students, too. So, I mean, I think we, we have our marching orders, so we're just kind of, that's all, that's running in the back of everyone's mind when we're making all these decisions and having these discussions. So we're just trying to make sure that students are supported while we're also continuing the growth and improvement of the district through the implementation of the strategic plan. Because we, every, every proposal, or most proposals have a financial cost in some way. They're not, it's not always clear from the face of it, but then when you dig down into, okay, like, how do we implement this? There's always a cost, so we're always thinking about that. So even though I've heard a lot of people ask, like, you know, it's going so slowly, you know, and it really hasn't. I mean, it has, it's taken, it's taken some time, but I was, I was going over the tentative agreements with all the units over break, and we have eleven pages of tentative agreements with the teachers and twelve with the paras, and the Unit D is a little trickier because we're coming up with a brand-new contract, but we've made a lot of progress with them. So that's, that was very helpful. So we've offered tentative agreements to the teacher and paraprofessional unions that include special education caseload caps of twenty students per special educator and forty students with IEPs for related service providers, so that's speech, OT, and PT, people like that. We have offered a tentative agreement on dedicated common planning time for teachers to collaborate with other teachers, paraeducators, and these related service providers and BCBAs. We have offered a tentative agreement for closing school on federal election days, which was one of the union's proposals, and we've added together several additional stipends for clubs, activities, and sports at the high school. So we're excited about that. Again, keeping students focused is the focus. We have, do have a few areas that are still in discussion. So for parental leave, the current benefit is birthing parents have access to FMLA, and they have access to ten days of their sick time. The union originally proposed eight weeks of paid leave with four additional weeks of access to teacher sick time, and we, we thought about it, something that's been really important, I think, to the committee and the Subcommittee, and we offered a paid parental leave package that would get us to that, that request and that proposal by the end of, say, the fourth year of the contract, because that's one of the things we're offering or proposing is adding a fourth year. So it would, so that's one of the things we're working towards. It, it would do it incrementally, but we think we can get there. But again, this, that's another proposal that has a cost. It seems like, oh, it's just access to time, but there are substitute costs that go with that, and we expect those to go up if people have that much time. So we'd like to get them there, and we like this proposal. So the other big thing is cost of living adjustments. We're still very, pretty far apart with these. The school committee has offered a cost of living adjustment, or COLA, of eleven point five percent over four years, so it would be two and a half, three, three, and three. The HEA has proposed an eighteen point seven five increase over three years. The HEA has proposed an 18.75 increase over three years, so that's six, 6.25%, and 6.5% for the contract's first three years. So we kind of costed it all out, and the school committee's proposal would cost $5.1 million over the three years of the contract, and the HEA proposal would cost an estimated $9.6 million over, that would have to find, and it would just note that we're already looking at cuts for next year in the budget, so we'd have, that would involve finding more, more ways to, to save. With the, similarly with the paraprofessional union, there's a significant gap. So the school committee has offered a COLA of 27% over three years, so it's 19% because we all recognize that we need to pay our pairs more. So the 19% to kind of bump them up, and then 4% and 4%. The HEA has proposed an 18, 89.5% increase over three years, so it's 43% raised, 43% in the second year, and then a 3.5% in the third year. So again, costing it all out, the school committee proposal would be additional $1.3 million, while the HEA proposal would cost an estimated $3.3 million over the life of the contract. So again, adding those up. And I just, I would note, like, looking at our budget discussions and considering all the proposals, we've noted the 83% of the budget goes to wages for staff. So when we're looking at, like, where can we cut things to, to get to closer together? That involves probably layoffs, or most likely layoffs, because that's where most of our budget is. There isn't a lot of fat to cut in other areas, so that's something we've been thinking about. So we've been having conversations, I think productive conversations with, with the HEA, with all the unions, and we are meeting with Units D and A tomorrow, and then we have a mediation session. The full committee can come if, if people want to on, with Unit B or the paraprofessionals on Wednesday. So I just, I just want to note that there's more information on the website, too. We've been continuously updating that. If people have questions, we have FAQs, and just, we're trying to, again, with the strategic plan goal of increased communication and improved communication, we're just trying to get as much information out there for people as possible. There was a question about health insurance at the last, our last meeting.
Yeah, I'll give an update, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I was going to add to all of that, so I appreciate that this has not been easy. I really am grateful to the Subcommittee and to the HEA for, I believe you guys are bargaining in good faith, and I know that this is a long and arduous process, and I really appreciate your efforts. HEA is doing it, and Margaret and Aisha, after your day jobs, and I know it's exhausting and as well as Michelle and Tim, and it's just the number of meetings, it's, it's, it's mind-boggling sometimes to think about how many meetings you guys are attending, so I really appreciate it. In addition to the update that Carrie had given, I know Jacqueline had sent a message to our town administrator, and I know that there was some back and forth. I spoke with the chair of the Select Board today, and she indicated she will be back to you by Wednesday, but they are working to get, to get back to you and, and hopefully resolve this. So I mean, I feel good about the movement that we might be able to make on the insurance side, but I can't speak for them. However, they are aware of it, and they're working towards it.
Yeah, and just for the public, too, the health insurance is negotiated between all the town unions and the town. It's not what, yep. It's a, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not, the school committee was not part of it.
The school committee is not, it's not our purview to... Okay. Sure. Come on up.
Hi. Jacqueline Boprey, President of the Hingham Education Association. So I wanted to thank you for reading off the greatest hits of things that we've TA'd that will make students' lives learning in the classroom better. I would like to note that those were HEA proposals. The student-facing, not student-facing, the student-directed proposals came from us. I honestly can't remember a single one from the school committee that would have directly impacted students in the ways that our proposals did. So thank you for touting it as something that was great coming out of negotiations, and I'd like to point out credit for that should be at the union. All right. So the health insurance, based on my understanding of Section 32B, 21 through 23, the PEC agreement that was reached with the town unions included an insurance split, and that is not something that can be negotiated with the PEC unless it's under Section 19. Otherwise, it falls under Chapter 150E, and you are the bargaining entity with us for everything under 150E. So you do have the authority to bargain health insurance as the agent of the town. So I think that's misinformation, and we've corrected the district lawyer on that. So I think that'll be something we all need to discuss, but I think there's some broad misunderstandings of that, so we're looking forward to addressing that because the insurance split is definitely something that's a problem in this town and why we're bringing it up. We would like to bargain with, you know, the other unions in mind, so we're, we're keeping that in mind, but understanding that that's a longer process possibly. So we would love your effort in pushing the town process under Section 19 forward so we can solve that for everyone, including retirees, but we're willing to also look at it with you at the table if needed, if that's the only way to move things forward, if, if Section 19 can't get passed. So I think we need to all reread that law again. I think I've passed through it many times, but it's a tricky one. All right. So that's my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to add?
No, I just note that our, we, our attorney is looking into that, that allegation. She was made aware of that today, and she's taking a look at it.
Yeah, because Personnel Board has always negotiated benefits. We, the School Committee has never negotiated in the past, so we will continue that conversation.
Yep.
Okay. Margaret or Aisha, do you want to add anything? No? Okay. All right. Moving on to 9.9, to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate. I did see that we had one thing. Aisha?
This one is a grant from the, from the PTO for, for the high school, and it came from, it came from the principal, just in terms of get approval for the grant as part of a harbor man stipend that will go to one of the teachers that has been appointed.
Is this a yearly grant that they give them?
I think it has been yearly.
They've been paying for it. Thank you to the PTO.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great day.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to accept a generous grant from the Hingham High School PTO in the amount of $1,500 to fund the stipend for a member of the Hingham High School staff to serve as coordinator of the annual harbor man helping Hingham Community Service Day.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Thank you. Okay, 9.10, I didn't see anything for surplus.
No.
So, okay, move over to item 10, Subcommittee and Project Reports.
I have none.
Great.
I have nothing as well.
I suspect this is my...
I have none, just negotiations.
Middle School Council is meeting next Monday at 2, March 8th at 2:15, and I attended all-town PTO the Friday before break, and just thank the PTOs for all of their efforts this year. They're really trying to make sure the staff understands that, how much the parents appreciate them, so.
Great. I have nothing. Oh.
Well, there's warrants in effect.
No warrants, okay. Michelle?
I've got nothing.
No. And then I have a school council meeting tomorrow at Foster at 2:00 PM, but otherwise, I have nothing. All right. So any items under 48 hours? No. All right. So we are going to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. So if I can get a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, not to return to open session for the purpose of approving minutes for executive session held February 5th, 2024, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
I so declare.
And to provide an update on negotiations with HEA's Units A, B, and D, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
I so declare. All those in favor? Matt? Ally? Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an "I" as well. All right.